Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We appreciate those who have come here to visit tonight. We note we have a full council present. All members are here. That does seem a little louder, doesn't it? That's probably good, since I have a soft voice. What's that, Chicken Little? I use my big voice. You guys don't watch those kids' movies. I've got grandsons who love them. So I've seen every kid's movie there. Probably yes. All cartoons. We'll begin... Oh, I feel like no one can hear me now. We'll begin with an opening ceremony. Councilman Lars Nordfeld has that, so we'll turn to him.
Thank you, Mayor. Would everyone please join the theme aside of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No scouts here tonight. Okay. Next on our agenda, item number five, are our minutes of August 9th. And so we need a motion from the council on the minutes.
Mayor, would for approval the August 9th minutes?
We have a motion and a second. Here's... Any discussion? Seeing none, why, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of August 9th? Please say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we have our comment period. Our comment period is where individuals from the public can address the council up to five minutes. We set aside up to half an hour on our agenda. I believe... No one signed up? Okay. Then I won't... I assume that no one was here to speak during our public comment portion. We do have one gentleman. Okay. If you will come forward and state your name and address, so that we have that for the record.
Hello, I'm John Sanders, and I live at 2543 Derby Street. And I'm just coming back to Tuscaloosa with you guys. Sorry we showed up at a bad time last week, because I really apologize. I'm still on a few things for our neighborhood. The rooster thing. I don't know where this comes from. There's a law in the state of Utah against chicken fighting. Man, let them take their course. I don't know why you want to make more laws, make your code enforcement, your police officers, your animal control. I think they've got enough to do right now. Sound like to me last week, we don't have enough money to pay them out. So I don't know why you want to give more things to do, the state hatch rules. Man, let them take care of it. You also don't understand that there's people out there that go to all affairs in Utah, and there's guys that may have 40 or 50 roosters, 40 or 50 hens. Now you're going to tell them they can't have only one hen or one rooster for every so many hens? Man, this whole thing just ain't right. And for me, it's like I told you before. You take the first thing from me, then you'll be back, and you'll be taking the next thing, and the next thing. Then you'll want to sell the back of our lot so they can build another house in the back of our lots. We don't want that. We want animals. I guess there's a whole big thing I'm getting. All these people are telling me, "You're going to come down and make us put new roofs, new windows, siding on our houses because they don't like the way our houses look in Chesterfield?" Now, if you want a revolution and you want to see everybody from Chesterfield in your meeting, try that one off your sides. Anyway, not excited this week. Just come. Well, everybody will be on the even keel. I just wanted to make sure you understood my point. And really, we would like to know if there's meetings about these roosters. Man, there's a lot of people that like to come and voice their opinion, too. So I don't know how that works. Maybe you could tell our representative, and he did let us know. That's enough said by me. And thanks.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Okay. Then that will conclude our public comment period. Any comments from our city manager?
No, sir. Thanks.
Council members? Just as far as notices of our meetings, those are on the website. And I think people can sign up to receive notification of those specifically, so that they get email or notification of them. And so with that, we go now to item seven on our agenda, which are our public hearings. We begin with application GPZ-12016. And this is a change requested by the city. Under this umbrella, we will consider three ordinances: ordinance 16-35, 36, and 124. One is for a change of land use on our general plan. One is for a zone change on two pieces of property near Lehman Avenue. And the final one is a development agreement with the Housing Authority of Salt Lake County. This is the area just out behind the city offices here. And the proposal is to make these changes as there may be the possibility of modifying that area, which is currently, I guess, low-income or subsidized housing for the most part that the county owns. And this will perhaps allow some redevelopment there. These are changes that need to be put in place. And of course, we continue to work with that. For those of you who may be here tonight, this will be the second time we've discussed this issue. All of our items on our agenda, with very few exceptions, are discussed in our previous week's study meeting. And we had a study meeting earlier this evening for the items that will be on our agenda for next week. So talking about this area behind us here, and we will address those three items as a single unit, although we will take motions on them individually, because they all pertain to the same thing: the general plan, the zoning change, and the development agreement. And we follow... I guess it's a requirement to break those up into separate ones, so that we have to act on them separately. With that introduction, I will declare open or accept public input on this application, these items on our agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this issue? Okay. Then seeing no one indicating they want to speak on this issue, I will close the public input portion. We will bring it back to the council then, and we will allow the council to discuss or make motions on this issue. And we'll do them, of course, one at a time.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 16-35 to amend the general plan?
Second. Okay, the motion is properly before us. Comments?
So, Mr. Powell, I have a question. So we're moving this, changing it from high density to very high. If we looked at a high density, how many units could they put on that same piece of property?
I'm going to have to refer that question. Nicole, will Lehman have an answer, or how do you want to handle that?
If I can answer that, it's 20 units to the acre.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
So how many acres are we doing? Five? I know I... My iPad's shut down on me. So I'm happy to do this. So we were at almost eight acres, so that would be 160 units-ish? 150?
Maybe we should have Steve Pastor come up for the math.
So the total of the 10 acres is 7.6, but by the time you take out the road and the area for the park, you're left with 6.3 acres. So, you know, a little over 120 if it was capped at 20 units to the acre. And the very high density allows how much? There's no cap. But what's proposed here is just over 40.
I think I'm just concerned about the... I mean, we're... Right now, they have 100 units?
Correct.
Not quite that much property, but I think that's...
Exactly.
And I think I'm more comfortable at 200 instead of 265?
67.
67.
I'm just, for reference, the Ico project just down the street. That one's closer to 80 units to the acre. So this is about half, half the density of that project.
But I think... Do they have any limitations to who can write those?
The Ico project is just a market rate project. There's no income restrictions in that one.
There, done? Then Councilman Hune was next.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Hey, I just have one concern I think I shared with you guys. I mean, with you before. I don't know how much our city is going to get involved with the county here, because I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the... This is going to be the place for, kind of a transitional place, for the homeless people. Very detrimental to our city. It's caused a lot of businesses in this area, and that's concerned me a lot. 100 units right now, we will have a problem. I shared it with you before. I ran into a couple of people right there. They're students in the corner nearby Costco. We turn on the In-N-Out ham, we go there, and go to Costco. And they're there. They live in this area. I mean, these units... If we have more units in that area, and I'm concerned about going to hurt the business right here in our city hall across from the street from the mall right here. One thing. The second thing is the security in this area is going to be the problem for the people, the neighborhood in this area, District 1 and District 2 right here, too. A lot of people live in this area very much. They are senior citizens. And they're concerning me. How much our city is going to get involved? That's my question. I want to know how we can... How much we can touch in this project with the county? How much we can control? I think very much the county can control the whole project from A to Z. Not much for us to get involved in this project. But that's my question. My concern, too.
If I may address that. So in the development agreement, and under Exhibit E, there's what we're referred to as management standards. And so in many cases in a development agreement, we focus more on just the design aspects, the materials, the open space, that sort of thing. In some apartment-type developments, we've actually also done, had some management-type restrictions as well. So this gives the city the opportunity to have some controls over how the property can be managed. And so in this, for example, it requires background checks, but also specifies that if someone, you know, for example, is a sex offender, for example, they're not allowed on the property. There's no smoking allowed on the property. So there are several restrictions placed in the exhibit that give the city the ability to basically make sure that the Housing Authority is abiding by these management standards and keeping the property maintained, but also making sure that they're abiding by the screening criteria for tenants. So again, we, as we looked at this project, we wanted to make sure that not only did it look nice, but it was operated well and managed well for the long term.
I might just add what Steve's saying there as well, and remind the council of some of the... Not only the background of this project, but also other projects that we have completed and supported in the past, including the zoning for the overall city center project. So when this goes to the density versus the tenant question, so to Karen's question on the number of units, which I understand your... I think I understand your question's probably more centered around the type of tenants we're going to have as opposed to the density itself. Is that correct? Maybe I shouldn't say that either, but yeah.
Density is my main concern.
Addressing just the density, like Nicole or Steve mentioned, this is half the density of the Ico project. So from a staff standpoint at least, recommendation of the number of units is not a problem. And you've seen the elevations, the site plans, and those sorts of things. And we're very comfortable, at least from the density standpoint. Not only are we comfortable with the density anyway, but it actually barely meets the standards from the overall city center zone that we've passed many years since. In fact, many times in the projects we get in, I get more questions about, "Well, this one isn't..." "This project doesn't have enough density. It's not tall enough. It doesn't have enough stories. It's not meeting the required, or at least the expected, number of units." That sort of thing. So we're also trying to address that aspect of the project as well. So that's the density side. On the tenant's side, and Tom's questions are very good, and these are ones that we have addressed also in the past. And I want to make sure that we address this in two ways. First, we now have had literally decades of experience in terms of evaluating which projects work, which ones don't, what's good from a management standpoint, what doesn't work from a management standpoint. And as Steve spoke to, that's why we have those restrictions in the management agreement, just like we've experienced on Highway Street before, or the Old Highway Street, the developments that are there now, or the one over on 31st South, whose name I always forget.
Kelly Benson.
Kelly Benson, and projects. Or even private market, market rate apartment complex. We've learned over the years that management is critical, and the management agreement and the entities that are behind that management are the ones that are going to make that work or fail. And we've got enough experience to be able to evaluate that at that time. The panhandling question. Councilman to address that one for you, Tom, and make that comfortable, other than to say it's really kind of a separate issue that we're looking at other ways to handle it anyway. And I'm sure you're aware, right now, we do have... We have people that are residents of West Valley or folks that are traveling in by day into West Valley and panhandling. So I understand your concern in terms of we are therefore going to be bringing more people into the area. And therefore, you have more potential for that kind of activity. But we feel like from the handling standpoint, we need to handle it in a different manner, anyway. So overall, the last thing I wanted to say on this was, if we're not, and I mentioned this last week, if we're not happy from the design, the materials, the actual contract, as far as the construction of the project and the building, the management, who the managers are going to be, how that management is going to be conducted, then we're not going to move forward with this either. Even with the passage of these entities, which just allow for, they don't mandate that the project goes forward. But on the other hand, we can't move forward with the project without these items being approved either. So if I can give you a level of comfort on that, and that's really basically how we plan on approaching it after. Obviously, we want to pre-plan. We want to work with our partners that are here. We want to make sure that all of those bases are covered on the planning side, and then execute after the project is brought to a building as well.
Okay. I believe Councilman Buehler was next.
Thank you, Mayor. I had some concerns in the meeting last week. I just want to... And those were frankly answered satisfactorily to me. Just want to restate those. And if I'm misstating anything, please correct me, because that would be the basis for my support of this action. First of all, I think this area, in this area, redevelopment is needed. It's certainly an older development that I don't think fits with our new downtown very well. And I'm very pleased with what's been pictured and representable to be the new development, including the density, including the off-street parking, and all of that. The other thing is I'm concerned about the people that live there now that are on subsidized housing. My understanding is that they will all have the ability to live there again or continue to live there, because it will continue to have subsidized housing, even more subsidized housing units than are there now. But it will be balanced by many units that are not subsidized, and will be market rate units to bring in a more vibrant variation of ages and incomes and everything else into our city center, which I think is also a worthwhile goal in our redevelopment. Is that correct?
Yes.
And could you tell me again what, how many units would be in the new development if it goes forward as planned? How many would be subsidized, and how many would be...
Sure. So the breakdown, so it's 267 units total. 75% would be some level of subsidy. And so there are different income levels for that. And then 25% would be market rate.
And in the conversation last week, I believe it was even expressed, that under HUD, the county would have obligations to help with moving and helping these people relocate, that this would be built in phases. They could either relocate here or somewhere else if they didn't want to stay here. But we would be accommodating to... Or the county would have to be accommodating to all of the residents that are there now.
Councilman Vincent?
Yeah, just a comment about the area generally, as far as our city center goes. One of the things we've tried to do is to get some more hype in this area and more stories of buildings. And we've been disappointed when we've only had four stories or three stories, when in reality, we've one and six stories or more. So from that standpoint, I'm happy with this project in giving us the ability to start to build a downtown skyline.
Further comments? All your questions answered. Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for a roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That was ordinance 16-35. Next, we go on this same issue to ordinance 16-36. This is the zoning change from R-28 residential duplex, minimum 8,000 square feet, to residential multifamily, and residential multifamily, to our city center zoning. Think I got that right? So those two get changed to city center, which is where we allow this specific type of development.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 16-36?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to resolution number 16-124. This is the development agreement between the city and... or with the Salt Lake County Housing Authority. And so same issue, but now this piece of it. So to the council.
I would move for approval of resolution 16-124.
Second. Okay, it's properly before us. Discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Next, we go to B on our agenda, under item 7B. And this is on application S-15-2016, which is requesting final plat approval for a CR England subdivision lot, 2400 South, 4800 West. Now, this is the one where we were talking about roads. And this is to enable us to... There's a street dedication in conjunction with this, part of the property from CR England. We needed to fix that so that we could get that road dedicated to the city. It was developed wide. And if you look there, it's designed to accommodate our large transportation vehicles, the long trucks and their trailers through that area. And so this will allow us to have that full 66 feet of right-of-way width, I believe is what we will have. So with that introduction, I will open public input for this application. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this application? Seeing no one here wanting to speak to it. I will close public input. We will come back to the council. And on this application, we have one. It's ordinance 16-37 for this amendment. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 16-37?
Second. We have a motion and a second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to item 7C. This is application S-17-2016 filed by Jared Collins, requesting final plat approval for property at 2991 West, 3835 South. This particular piece of property extends between two streets, 3835 South and 3875 South. Many of those properties in this subdivision have already been split in half. They're long and deep. And this request for this particular piece will follow that pattern and be divided into two different pieces. Both will have frontages, one on one street, the other on the other street. So it's a normal subdivision lot and will be consistent with other pieces. And we believe that there are apparently a few more of these still in that area. But this one just allows that to be consistent development, as in the past. With that, then, I will now accept public input. I declare open the public input portion for application S-17-2016. Anyone here to speak to this issue? Obviously, these were not very... Didn't generate a lot of interest, other than those who are developing it. For them, it's a great interest. Seeing no comment, I will close the public comment period. We come back to the council, where we will consider ordinance 16-38.
Mayor, move for approval, excuse me, ordinance 16-38?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder. Seeing no discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have item eight on our agenda, resolution, we have three resolutions. The first one, A, is 16-125. This is to amend our agreement with utility cost management consultants for certain consulting services. This is relating to utilities within the city and it's for a two-year term where if they recommend certain changes that could result in savings to the city and the city accepts those recommendations, then they will be compensated by receiving 35% of the actual savings for three years following implementation. This contract though is designed so that it's fairly narrowly defined. There are some things that our own staff do that will not be included in this and those will not be, we will not pay for things that we figure out ourselves. I think that's kind of a general statement, but catches, I hope, the intent of it. And these are very beneficial to the city because they have the specialists go through and find certain things, but it's narrowly enough that we won't get it unless we use their sources. And there will be no double billing or anything like that in it. So with that introduction, this is not a public input item, so this goes directly to the council for their consideration or motion.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-125?
Second. We have a motion and a second on this resolution, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
No.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
All right, next is an interesting one. This is resolution 16-126. It's called a development backbone contract between Rocky Mountain Power and the city. We are talking about Fairborn Station out here, our Phase Two. In order for this to continue to grow, Rocky Mountain Power needs to put in some vaults and underground utility tunnels, whatever, I'm not exactly sure how you refer to them. But these costs, and the costs are $68,000, will be recovered at a future date. We're doing this for the development by ICO, the ICO residential project there. And so in order to move this forward, we do it and then there is an agreement that we'll be reimbursed those costs at a later date. That is the issue before us, pretty straightforward, to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 16-126?
Second. We have a motion and a second, properly before us now, any discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, our next resolution is 16-127. This is a contract ordered to ACME Construction for the Meadowlands Detention Basin Project. This is a contract for $230,000. If you look at the details, the actual contract is for slightly less than that, but we approve the potential change orders and unidentified items in it, which we have made a practice of doing on our contracts now. The actual contract, $205,325. And that detention basin is a flood control facility. It's been overrun with fragmite, it says fragmites, they say. To me, it's fragmites, but fragmites, okay. And that's because it's low in, not very deep water, those things are spreading not just there, but in many locations along the Jordan River. A lot of projects going on to kill those out. When they fill up with those, then it defeats the purpose of a drainage basin or detention basin for water. So in order to make that work, you have to clean them out and it'll be easier to remove trash. Generally, they're going to make inlets and outlets, rock basket walls around the perimeter, et cetera. And I believe they're going to put in a, oh yes, it will construct trails and a bridge over the water channel so the neighborhood can use it to wander around in for kind of a park-like area. So that is the item before us, to the council then.
I move approval of resolution 16-127?
Second. We have a motion and a second before us, properly done, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next on our agenda, we go to our new business, A, where we have application S-3-2016 filed by Denali Clark, final plat approval for the Alitia? Alitia, Alida? Alida acre subdivision at 3884 South, 6400 West. And let's see. Is this the one that goes? I'd stop the, okay, yes, into four lots. I'd stop and remember our discussion from last week. And if I remember correctly, this goes, yes, there are, this is a piece of property with frontage on a street. It goes back through a subdivision and there's a home at the very back, but there will be a street crossing at that point. It will be divided into four pieces. So the lot at the very back will be on the street currently, that will be finished through there, connecting two different parts of the subdivision, a home also on that street, one out on the main street. The other one, in order to have access to it, because it is not on an existing street, will have a, I wouldn't call it alleyway, but an access way connecting it to one of the streets. This has been done in a number of areas of the city in order to facilitate utilizing the land and this is going to be one of those. So will be divided or created, or they will take the one piece of property and make it for four, with the one home, I assume, remaining on the one piece of property. That is the issue before us. If I can find my house, there it is. Lost it in the picture there. So to the council then for this issue, application S-3-2016.
Mayor?
Mayor, move for approval of application S-3-2016?
Second. It's properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next we have 9B under our new business. This is application S-16-2016 filed by Natomas Meadows LLC. This is final plat approval for the ARA Industrial Center Subdivision Phase Two. This is 6935 West, SR 201. This is an industrial area where commercial buildings are being built. First one is done, doing successfully, now they're going to Phase Two. This particular piece of ground will be utilized for that along the frontage road. And as I looked at it, there is not going to be a road connection on the backside. As I didn't ask that question before, but in looking at the map, it does not look like they're going to connect those roads back behind there.
There will eventually, Mayor, just not now.
Okay, well, they'll connect the parking areas, of course, because these are, you know, very similar issues. But the road over to the subdivision along that, I guess it's canal right there?
Yeah, there's a road that's eventually slated to connect over to the.
So it eventually will happen, but not part of this project.
Right.
Okay. Okay, that is the issue before us, to the council then.
Mayor, I move for approval of application S-16-2016?
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next we go to item 10, our agenda. This is our consent calendar. We have five items on there, resolutions 16-128 and 129 and 130 and 131 and 132. Now, these are typically not very controversial. We will take these probably as a group. They are temporary construction easements on properties near 2600 South and 2600 West. All of these are in relation to, and I have to get the name right, the Pole Line Drive Storm Drain Project. And in fact, we have two on our agenda for next week as well. We've had a few of these and will continue to have others in order to compensate, depending upon the circumstances there, we pay a fee to them for the use of their land because we go in and work there, ranging from $300 to about $2,100, depending on location, size of the property and negotiations, et cetera. So all five of those, although they're different entities, different companies, all five of them are exactly the same issue and project, just different property owners. With that then, to the council.
I move for approval, five items in consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, then we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote on the five items in the consent agenda, resolutions all beginning with 16-128, 29, 130, 131, 132.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now that completes the scheduled business on our agenda for tonight. Any final comments from anyone on the council, Mr. Pyle? Then our business is concluded and we have just one item of business left to make it official.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned.